Sorry guys.
Good luck.
Good evening, my name is Mark Haddix, I'll be your moderator this evening for the Meet the Candidates Night after the Noble Local School Board. I'm honored to welcome you to this important evening as we gather to meet the candidates for our upcoming school board election. There are three positions up for election for the school board, this election with seven candidates running. It's my privilege to serve as the moderator for this evening, and tonight we'll have the opportunity to learn more about the individuals vying to shape the future of our educational system. Our democratic process thrives on informed choices and tonight, we aim to facilitate a forum that empowers you to make an educated decision. Now, I would like to introduce our candidates in alphabetical order and give them each three minutes for their personal introduction. Our incumbent, Constance Archer.
Good evening, my name is Constance. Good evening, my name is Constance, for those that do not know me, I am blessed with the last name of Archer, thus the reason I am the lucky candidate to pick us off this evening. Please be warned, I'm passionate, I'm emotional, and I talk with my hands. I'm running for my third term on the Noble Local School Board, and I must confess, these past eight years have been humbling, hard, and all the while, extremely worth it. The biggest issue education has is that we only know what we experienced when we went to school, years, and for some, that would be decades ago. Because of our exposure gaps, we don't really know what we are preparing our kids for. In our quest to be relevant, we become attractive to others. The value of being attractive to others is helping us to sustain and offer more to our kids at Noble Local. This is at no cost to the district, and quite frankly, costing others. People want to talk about expenditures, and I use the word investments. We are constantly investing. Let's talk about the revenue we have leveraged from other sources. For instance, at one point, we were down sixty-seven. Sixty-seven kids were choosing to seek opportunities elsewhere. Going from negative sixty-seven to three hundred and four in the positive, that's one point eight million dollars additionally here. What we are doing, and what we are investing in, is producing a great return on investment. As I mentioned, enrollment is way up, fewer kids are leaving our district for other options. Education and student preparation is aligned to our students' futures, STEM, our investments into improvements to the infrastructure, and we are continuing to complete projects in phases. We have no debt. We are not pushing our wants and needs to per future constituents. Staff work diligently on obtaining grant money, and we are always evaluating spend. On the horizon, big things are continuing to happen at Noble Local. We are developing a master plan, and are in the beginning stages of discussing future projects. Obviously, there are many candidates here this evening, who may think they are running to fix what they perceive as wrong, and I am sure, many of you may have your own regrets. I like to think that I have a finger on the pulse of the community, but sometimes, I wonder. In this platform, I truly hope we can address some of the questions and/or concerns you may have, but if I am unable to do this evening, I will assure you that I am available to address any time after. I'd like to take a moment and say thank you to our students, Mrs. Lorai and Mr. and Mrs. Kepury for putting on this event.
Now I would like to introduce the incumbent, Guy Carpenter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Shenandoah High School. And Constance was very prepared with that, after reading this from Mark Haddix. Just like to tell you a little bit about myself. Guy Carpenter, married for twenty-four years happily to my wife Heather Carpenter, had four kids, Paige, Alexis, Mackenzie, and A.J. Carpenter, who is still a junior here at Shenandoah. Granddaughter, Hayden Sue, and a soon-to-be step-granddaughter, and that's Alina Gabrielle. I want to tell you a little bit about why I want to come back here for my fourth term. We have a lot going on. Constance hit all the high points that we had, a lot of things that we've done in the past, including the farm which is STEM-driven. We're the only school east of Columbus and south of Kansas that is STEM-designated, and we're one of the only schools, I believe, maybe the only school, K through twelve that is STEM-designated as well. We've added a lot of programs for the extracurriculars as well. I'm pretty proud of that fact. Sean Stritch here, head soccer coach, he has fought two nails to make that program big. We've added a drone program down at the farm, Randy Lovey's done a big part of that. And we continue to thrive, to give opportunities to each kid, each student, each teacher, each staff member, to get better no matter what they do. We want to continue that process, we want to make sure that your kids have a safe haven here at school. We continue to look at the safety majors that we do. We tie ourselves in with the sheriff department. We continue to do training here, a lot of times we've added to people that, you know, are concealed care. That's a big thing that we would like to continue here at Shenandoah as well. And at this time, you know, that's going to be short and sweet, you don't hear that from me very often. I'd like to continue, I'd like to continue with the extracurricular curriculums that we've done as well, as opposed to your Friday night football games. Thank you for your gift.
Our next candidate is incumbent Lori McRoy.
Good evening, my name is Lori McRoy, and I am an incumbent seeking reelection to the Board of Education. I'm a longtime resident of Noble County, and a nineteen ninety grad- nineteen ninety-nine graduate of Hollow High School. In two thousand and three, I graduated from Ohio University with a Bachelor of Science, and two thousand and seven, from Kent State University with a Doctorate in Audiology. I live on the McRoy family farm outside of Sarisville with my husband Jay and two boys. Noah is a freshman, and Caleb is in the sixth grade. For the last four years, every third Thursday of the month, I participated in the Noble Local Board of Education meetings as a board member. During these meetings, the best interest of all children is placed at the forefront of the conversations. During these meetings, the best- however, the work of a board member does not stop at the meetings. I field phone calls to listen to concerns of parents, we are stopped at the grocery store, art children's sporting events, and even church. I have also had multiple conversations with staff about their ideas and improving the classroom. I'm always a board member and always open to listen to your concerns, comments, or ideas. If I do not answer any of the questions this evening, please, as Constance said, feel free to reach out to us. Email, phone, stop by my house. Thank you.
Our next candidate is Frank Miller.
Uh, Frank Miller, you can see I didn't do paperwork or anything, I just sort of fly it off the cuff. But I will give you one thing, I come to run on this right here. I come to run for school board for the, on the word of God. And I know that that might be taboo in this day and age that we live in, but if we can't figure out, and I'm running for this, to figure out what's going wrong in our school, in our cultures, in our kids, and what we're trying to bring them up with the character that we need to bring them up in, and we can't figure out to go back thirty or forty years to see where this mistake started, and we keep just looking forward, we're going to be in a whole lot of trouble. Because it didn't always be like this. Nineteen ninety-six, my family moved out here from the Warren School District. We came to a horse show at Caldwell Fairgrounds, and we started meeting the people in this community. And me and my wife said, this is where we want to raise our kids. It's changed. And everybody that knows anything about anything knows that the culture of Shenandoah has changed. And it needs to change back. Now, if you don't agree with that, I'll tell you right now, don't vote for me. Because I'm trying to bring back what I've seen in the community and the school district in nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and twenty-four. I don't believe that we should keep going down the road that we're going down right now, with our kids, our teachers. We had a teacher not so many long ago got in trouble because she put something on her Facebook about God. And she had to fight for her job. In my eyes, that's wrong. And if you think that's wrong, and you want it to change, then vote for me. And if you don't, then don't vote for me. But I won't compromise what I believe in. That's where I'm at, that's what I believe. I believe that Jesus Christ is who we have to stand on, and I don't believe there's anything in this book that is a lie. And if you don't believe in this book, don't vote for me. Thank you.
Next, Danny Parks.
Good evening, gentlemen. First of all, I'd like to thank you everybody, students, and everything that did this organize, for us to sit down here tonight and we can discuss the things that we feel are valuable towards the school and for the kids. My name, like Mark said, Danny Parks, my wife of twenty-five years is Jill Parks. We are invested in this school as former employee, as teacher, and we've raised five kids, which all of us have graduated from this school. Tonight, you're going to hear me talk a lot about financial responsibility and transparency. And then, all the decisions that we're going to be making, or a school board should be making, is for nothing but the kids and the kids themselves. Thank you.
And Dana Hill was willing to join us this evening, but, you know, with the accident, that could have kept him from being here today.
He's walking in right now.
Perfect timing. So I'll let Dana take a seat, and Scott Sills, who did not attend this evening due to already having a wire-scheduled family trip, he did provide a bio that I would share on his behalf. Scott is married to Chris Sills, and they have two sons, Ryan and Devin, who are both graduates of Shenandoah. They also have two grandchildren, Ripken and River, who will both be attending Noble Local. Scott has worked in the welding supply industry for over thirty years, where he has been a branch manager at two locations, and is currently a salesman. He has coached and mentored kids for over thirty years at Noble Local, and truly believes it's his calling. Scott feels that he would make a good school board member because of his involvement in coaching, and through open lines of communication that he has built between himself, students, and parents, and the fact that he's been a part of this district for thirty years and wants to succeed. This concludes Scott Sills' submitted bio. Now, I would like to have Dana Hill come for his three-minute opening seat.
My name's Dana Hill. I was born and raised here in Mapple County. Went to Shenandoah for twelve years, thirteen. I lived on the upper end of the county all my life until a few years ago, I moved down to Fort Belleville. I have five kids go through this, one is still here, and several nieces and nephews go through here, and I'm here to stay in this school district the rest of my life. So I would greatly appreciate serving the school in any way I can, and to help our teachers to get what they need, and about it, I don't know. Not much of a speaker, sorry, wasn't me.
I'd like to introduce our timekeepers for tonight. They are from the student body here, and sophomore Lily Davie, and junior Emma Morris. Will be keeping everybody in line this evening. And recording tonight's event is the digital media class, and this will be posted on Shenandoah's media's YouTube either Wednesday or Thursday for your viewing, and we're also live streaming as well. Also in attendance is the journal leader, and before we start the question, I'd like to ask everyone, please join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, candidates, and thank you for participating in tonight's event. This was in partnership with parents in the community, as well as the student body government here at Shenandoah. So as you know, we'll have some students participating in this event. And before we begin, it is essential that we establish a few round rules to ensure constructive and orderly gathering. We value both your participation and the candidates' time, and want to make the most of this opportunity. First and foremost, let us maintain a respectful and courteous atmosphere tonight. Everyone here has the right to express their views and listen without interruption or disrespect. I would ask the audience, hold your applause for each of the questions until the end of the night, and then we'll give a round of applause for everybody tonight. So the audience has been given an opportunity to submit their questions in the hall earlier, and those questions will be asked of the candidates later in our program. Secondly, each candidate will be given a fair chance to present their ideas and respond to questions. We will be keeping a close eye on the time to accommodate questions, so each candidate will be given one minute to give their response to the presented question. Our timekeeper will hold up a yellow paddle to give you a thirty-second warning, and when you're at time, the timekeeper will hold a red paddle, and I would ask that you finish your sentence, and we'll move on. We ask that everyone, if we can have all your cooperation in adhering to these time limits. And our first questions served this evening are from those that were submitted from our Shenandoah Student Body Government. And I must say that they did a wonderful job on submitting some thought-provoking questions. And we do have a special guest this evening that will be moderating those student questions. It is our senior class president, Thomas Emery.
Good evening, everyone, and good evening, candidates. Our student body has come up with a couple questions to ask the candidates tonight. The first question tonight will start with Constance Archer, and what is your why?
The feeling of giving back has always been the most satisfying sensation since as long as I can remember. I look at serving on the Noble Local School Board as part of my civic duty to give back. I'm invested in the district, this is the place I call home. Having the opportunity to be a small part of students' endurance is a true blessing, but along with that blessing, is always the weight of the enormous responsibility it is to be a board member. Balancing what a board member really is responsible for versus being sincerely able to meet the public's needs is a constant struggle. Ultimately, I genuinely care about the state of our district, and will continue to work at moving our district forward.
Thank you. All right, next up is Guy Carpenter with the same question, as what is your why?
My why is because I want to see each and every student have better opportunities than we had before us. I've always been told to leave it better than you found, and it seems like I want to continue that all the way through. So we have kids that not only start careers here, but they start families here, and they continue to be there, which is one thing we need to do is build the community up, and be more collaborative with the incoming commissioners. Another thing is, I have a vision, not an agenda. Well, that's quick. I have a vision that all kids have ample opportunities so that they're equal opportunities, so they can have a successful career and life. And I look more on the why not as to the whys. Why not us, given opportunities, these kids have proven that they have been more than willing and more than capable of exceeding expectations, and I want to see that continue.
All right, next up, we have Van Hill with what is your why?
Well, I'm running for Noble Local Board for the health teams in the district, and for the teachers and the students to better in the classroom. I would like to be part of the team to represent our community, input on how to better Shenandoah, pride, and make things better, and so our children can progress in whatever they choose to do in the future. I just was born here, I have a lot of pride here, and I just want to help continue to make sure all kids have the right, and get the right schooling and the right teachers that they need to proceed in life. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can you turn the volume on that mic up a little bit?
Thing is, it's going to have a close to its face, but we'll get to that with several more questions down the line. Next up, we have Laurie McCallroy with the question is, what is your why?
Four years ago, I ran for my kids, I wanted to ensure they had a strong education to promote success in their future. Every parent wants the best of their kids. Today, I run for the one thousand one hundred and forty students in our district. In the last four years, there have been multiple advancements in education at Noble Local, and I want to see that advancement stay and continue to thrive. The staff at Noble Local has set the bar high, and it hopefully maintain and continue to want more for our students.
All right, thank you. Now, next up, we have Frank Miller, same question, what is your why?
My why is, I'm running for school board because I want to build character in kids. I think we have to get back to our original history book, and that's the Bible. If we don't know how it started, we aren't going to understand how it ended. We live in, we live in a society today, and our schools, not just in Noble, but all over the place, that is crushing our history and telling the kids it's not important. We have core math, my grandson comes home and tells me that he's got a two plus two isn't four anymore, they don't care about that, they just want to know how they got to the answer. That's not going to work in society. I got a business of seventeen years, and if you don't know what two plus two is, you're going to be in trouble when you get out there. We have to build the character in these kids to understand what's on the horizon for them when they get into the world. It isn't all about college. We need plumbers, electricians, we need ditchsters, and it's okay to be that. And somewhere along the line, we have dropped that.
Thank you. Now, last but not least, James Fords.
My why, my reason, starts with a personal connection with this school district. As a graduate, former employee, and as captain, I think that's important. And you had in some of the decisions that have been made in the past has determined me to want to be involved. In hope that I can help make better decisions for everyone and everything within our district. Don't get me wrong, we have a great thing going here at Shenandoah, we have great staff, teachers, students, faculty, as well as amazing campus. And it seems that most are doing their part, but I personally feel we have something missing in order to be a great school district. We need to improve our relationships between the district and the community. An effective school board is to collaborate and establish a strong line of communication within itself first, and include everybody on the internal side of it, as well as everybody on the external, in the public. Transparency is a must.
All right, thank you. Next up, we'll go with the question, what skills do you offer that other candidates do not? What sets you apart from the other candidates? And I'd like to start this one off with Guy Carpenter.
I believe the skill set that sets me apart from the rest of the candidate is the network that I've built over the years in the fiber industry, understanding the construction work side of it, and bringing those hard negotiations that I must get through on a daily basis, the bidding procedures, and the opportunity to place kids into work uh, the bidding procedures, and the opportunity to place kids into workforce. You know, we started a great thing here with workforce development. I think my skill set aligns well with that, and I think it's going to be a continued success. Uh, I've got twelve years on the school board, three more years as MIBs, so I think the experience also is another skill set that sets me apart from others as well.
Thank you. All right, next up, the same question, we'll go with Lori McGalway.
I have two things listed. The first is experience. Being a member of the Board of Education is not an easy job, though they want to learn, and they continue to learn daily. I hope to use the knowledge that I've gained in the last four years to continue to make financially sound decisions and find ways to further our students' education. The second is practicality. I tend not to sway from my gut decisions, even when I'm in the minority.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we'll have Frank Miller with the same question, what skills do you offer that other candidates do not? What sets you apart from the other candidates?
This is an easy one for me. I don't go long to get along. I don't believe in the name game. I'm black and white. If I am the color print, I take gray out of it, and I'm about right or wrong, and I won't compromise that. If I'm wrong, I'll be the first one to tell you I'm wrong, and I'll apologize. But until you prove to me that I'm wrong, I ain't budging. That's what sets me apart from everybody else. I don't get along. I don't go long to get along.
All right, thank you. Next up, we'll have Constance Archer with the same question.
I personally believe my eight years of experience is of importance. The board serves as a positive and responsible liaison between the school district and the community. I believe I am a strong district ambassador to the community. I know firsthand the challenges and what it takes to be a board member. I am just one of five, but I lead by listening to our community members. I have the strength to speak up for what is right. What sets me apart? Maybe I'm not all that unique, but I am one of us. I am embedded, and I care. I seek first to understand. I am passionate about seeking facts and always voting in the best interest of the district. Apart is not what I strive for. It is to work well with other qualified board members and be a team player.
All right, thank you. Next up, we'll have James Tawkes with the same question.
The skills that I, uh, have that I can bring with me, um, is all life experience skills. I bring a little bit of elected official time as a mayor. I bring a lot of construction experience with me with my job at the O.R.G. I'm a former employee here, as a captain, finding through the years as a self-employed business. I also bring a common sense approach to my decision-making for the district.
Thank you. Next up is Daniel.
What skills do I have to offer to other candidates? Uh, I have a little bit of business experience. I run my own business for the last twenty years. It's fairly successful. I'm not in a poor house. I have a small farm. I have cattle, horses, things like that. Um, what sets me apart from everybody else? Not a lot. Uh, I've went to school here all my life, and it seems they have. I don't put myself above anybody. I'm more equal to everybody than anything. But I will not take, uh, I got a voice in my ear, and I will stand behind my voice. And I will not let somebody tell me what to do. I would like to work together with everybody to make this a better place. Thanks.
Thank you. Next question we have on board is, school safety is an area of concern for many students. How should the district approach to issue curating and retaining its safe environment for the students to stay? We'll start off with Lori McGalway.
The staff administration takes tremendous consideration for the safety of students and staff at Noble Local. There have been many changes over the last several years to secure everyone's safety. We have two resource officers, one at the high school and one at the elementary school. We have implemented raptor technology to quickly screen visitors and volunteers, block technology to re-license plates as they enter the campus. We have highly trained staff who conceal carry to mitigate threats of an active shooter. The entrance of both schools have been upgraded, upgraded with locked doors to ensure visitors are not afraid to roam the halls. We have installed security cameras. Could be more. There's always more that could be done. In this case, I encourage our students and staff to stay diligent in observing their surroundings. If you hear or see something, say something to the appropriate staff. I also encourage the same people to close the outside doors behind them.
All right, uh, next up with the same question, we'll have James Tawkes.
The safety and security for our students, teachers, and staff, in my mind, is of utmost importance. With continuing effort with local law enforcement and our armed staff, we need to continue to incorporate every possible element to reassure everyone that we are doing everything possible to create a safe and secure campus.
Thank you. Next up with the same question, we'll have Guy Cawthorne.
Safety is always the number one concern on everyone's list. I think we continue with the precedent that we've set with the two resource officers, one in each building, and that will continue to grow as we continue to plan for more facilities in this area. Concealed carry for the staff that are qualified and willing to do so, we would like to continue that. And also, uh, other safety measures we need to look at is, since we've brought in our master planner, and he's going to help us with dealing with roadways and safe travels, look to maybe add some roadways down to the farm, down Green Acres, also to, um, look to add some, uh, excuse me, add some parking so we can eliminate the bottleneck when we have many students in the district after hours. So, that would be another way that we can look at better safety for all.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Frank Miller with the same question.
Again, I would just go back to when I was in school. We used to do nuclear war, um, training in our school. Fire drills in our school that we had. Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm trying to see if I can still, in case I still have warrants, uh, just easy. And I think that we should, with active shooters, nobody wants to talk about it, but it's part of the world today, and it's something our kids have got to go. I'm all for training the staff, but these kids need to be trained too to know what they have to do if an active shooter comes into their school. And it isn't curling up in a corner and hoping that you're not the one to get shot. We have to be proactive, not reactive. And these kids have got, we've got football players that can take out half of the community. They need to be trained to protect the kids in the school.
All right, thank you. Next up, we'll have Dan Hill with the same question.
I think we do a good job here for what sake do we have? And, uh, I mean, if I was to be able to remember, I'd be willing to discuss your opinion on topics and about school districts would need to make better decisions in the local schools. But overall, I mean, how do you make something a hundred percent where nobody, nothing's going to happen? I don't think there is a hundred percent that you're going to be, that nothing will happen. If somebody wanted to come in and do something, it would be, it's going to happen. But we can do all the precautions and work with the law enforcement and try to better everything that we can to try and keep everybody safe and to educate our kids on what to do if something was to happen and hope God that it never happens here. But it does, it does happen in small communities, too.
Thank you. Next up, we have Constance Archer.
Safety is a priority. As a safety committee member, the ongoing preparedness and financial investments in the security of our children is number one. We are constantly evaluating our systems and ways to continuously improve. Armed staff, SROs, mark's radios, HD video surveillance, exterior doors, raptor systems, and block safety license plate technology are just some of the examples of our investment. But safety is more than just physical. Schools also promote safety by responding thoughtfully to parents' school concerns. Cybersecurity is essential, and under the direction of Mr. Theobald, we are proactive and prepared. School safety is a collaborative effort that involves educators, students, parents, administrators, and the community. Emergency response plans, student mental health, and community involvement in the safety planning is essential. By being well-prepared, vigilant, and proactive, our kids can be trusted at school.
Thank you. All right, next question on the board. Three areas of improvement that you hope to have a positive impact on F.D. Lightfoot. We'll start with James Tawkes.
Three areas that I would like to see the district really concentrate on, from being out around campaigning, doing a little door-to-door this year, probably covering seventy-five percent of the district, is again, a lot of, uh, a lot of the same questions over and over. We need to improve and maintain, and maintain all lines of communication, not only internally, but externally as well. We need to regain the confidence of our community, and we need to strive for financial responsibility.
Thank you. Next up with the same question, we'll go with Dan Hill.
Some areas that I'd like to improve on is transparency. You know, let everybody know what's going on and how it's going on. I don't feel we have as much transparency as we should have or could have. And another thing is to try and help our teachers to get the aides that they need to perform their daily duties. We have mental kids here that goes into our classes, and we don't have the proper aides to take care of them. And I think we need to, uh, address that issue. And if it's because they're not getting paid enough, we need to do something. Give them a money or whatever we got to do to take care of our teachers and to help them be able to do their job. I don't know if there's a, I got a third one right offhand, but, uh, there's some other things that need to be addressed here in this school, so, thanks.
Thank you. Next up with the same question, uh, three areas of improvement that you hope to have a positive impact on if you elected, we'll go with Guy Cawthorne.
Those three biggest areas I see that we have concerns in are the pre-K through third grade literacy. It used to be a real hard test that we'd come up in the third grade, but all kids would just, it would ruffle mentally and physically. It would wear them out. So, I think we need to focus well there because, as Lori said in the Michael's interview, is if you don't read well, you don't do much well. So, and she would use that later, I'm sure. Also, the communication with the students that leave our district. I believe we have a, we have to look further into it as allowing them to know what's going on at our school. I think once they leave our district for options that we may not provide yet, we don't communicate and tell them what they have going on back at the home school. And also, our CCP program. Uh, there's a lot we have to tweak there. There's a lot of information we need to share and do a better job of getting students ready for that.
Thank you. Next up with the same question, we'll go with Lori McGalway.
The first one is literacy. Life is easier when you read well, and I feel that every child deserves to reach their fullest potential. Um, the second one I have is mental health. I'm not lost to the fact that bullying happens in most schools. And a previous meeting of candidates, um, wanted to give a shout to Angela. A community member discussed the importance of educating adults, parents, and teachers on the science of addiction, depression, and suicide. Firstly, I think it would be a wonderful addition to our district and hope we can incorporate that idea in most schools. We so often consider physical health, and sometimes mental health gets rough and rough. My third is invest in our future. Noble Local School District moves at a rapid speed to raise our goals. Our world is constantly changing, and I feel like we need to constantly look forward towards our future to adapt to the changing world we live in.
Thank you. Next up, we'll go with Frank Miller.
I'd like to see an entrepreneur program run into the school, leaving them know that, look, I got no, no college at all, and I've run my own business for seventeen years. I've learned there's two things that I know that haven't changed. One plus one will always be two, and God's word never changes. I would like to see the parents get more involved in the school. Here we are, the people that's going to run your school, and we can't even fill up the auditorium. And then we're the same parents that will come in and complain that Johnny's not getting the right attention. So, we've got to get more out in our community and bring those parents into our school. How do we do that? I agree with, I believe with Dan, so we've got to knock on doors, get them more involved. The kids that are maybe not as financially secure to play in our bidding programs, we should have bats and balls for them. And I've heard it, it's always been this way, the parents take care of it. Well, I got news for you. If your kid is in third grade, their parents pay taxes here too, and they should have access to that program. We've got a lot of athletes, I know the times, uh, we've got a lot of young athletes out here that don't have the ability financially to get on these fields, and we should be looking to help them.
Thank you. Okay, last but not least, Constance Archer.
Communication needs standards and accountability. Communication, the idea that we have to communicate better is often too generic, but there's always room for improvement. I think making access to the board meetings more convenient and offering small coffee sessions around the county is a thought to improve perception and increase communication. Meeting standards. Although so many of the standards are set in the legislature, do not measure equitability across all subgroups, we need to improve or bridge the gap to meet the standards to which we are gradually. Accountability. This comes This comes through hard conversations and accurate evaluations. In essence, all areas of improvement solely rely on the team, not just me as a board member, administration, staff, parents, grandparents, and the community. Societally, we need to hold each, we need to hold ourselves accountable. If you want to know the facts, show up, ask questions, come to a board meeting, pick up the phone and call me. I'm ready and willing to address any questions and concerns that you may have.
Thank you. All right. The next question is, in your opinion, what have been the three biggest achievements of the district in the last five years? We will start with Constance Archer.
STEM designation. To put it into perspective, the designation of both the high school and K-28 building is an opportunity that less than eighty other school districts can claim. Only two point three percent of students in Ohio attend a STEM-designated school, while over ninety percent of our future jobs in Ohio will be STEM-related. Some, we don't even know what exists, and will pay sixty-eight percent higher wages. The development of Green Acres Farm Complex. The farm is a project that fully embraces workforce development opportunities in this new age of technology. The students have an opportunity, opportunity to learn every aspect of the agriculture business in a hands-on manner. Three, preschool. In two thousand fourteen, we had nineteen students. Today, we have over a hundred and twenty with eight classrooms of highly qualified educators. Not only was expanding our preschool program a right thing to do, but it results in a significant return on investment.
Thank you. Next up here with the same question, in your opinion, what have been the three biggest achievements of the district in the last five years? We'll go with Dana Hill.
All right. So STEM is a big, a big issue and a, and a great thing that we have going and could continue forever. And the farm is a great, uh, asset to our community and to our school. We need to operate a little bit, and some of them, and some of the things, we, we need to do different things down there other than just telling them how to buy expensive equipment and pay somebody to come do our workforce. Some of the things that they mentioned that we don't know much about because we're not there, and we should be more into what we're doing. So I want to learn and to continue to grow and, and, uh, make things a lot better.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Lori McGalway answer questions.
This question was the easiest for me. The first one was STEM designation. Research shows that STEM jobs allow for higher earnings, which will be a blessing in our students' future. The second was the upgrade facilities. Over the last several years, facilities have been upgraded in phases to be more fiscally, fiscally responsible. And the third was increased preschool enrollment. Research shows that preschool experiences enhances early education literacy.
Thank you. Next up, we'll go with Frank Miller.
I was talking about character. Right there is what I'm talking about. That young man just showed some great character right there. Sit down, guy.
It's the first time I've heard that.
FCS program, the after-school program. I'm proud of Skyler Rich for putting that together. If you don't know what it is, I'm not gonna tell you. Look it up. It's a great program. The Ag Building, I think that's awesome. We live in a, in, in a farmers community, and I think that's a great place. And I think how we navigated through the COVID situation in our school system and our community. There's families that were torn apart by that, that had different opinions on it. But we came together at the end and forgave and forgot and moved on, and I'm proud of us for that.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have James Talks.
For reading this question, I, I figured out that it needed to be four things in my mind that stand out. The preschool, preschool program, I feel that after talking to some of the teachers, it gives these little people out, gets them a great start, and gets them to have it in the right time. I'm also very impressed with the Green Acres, the farm. Hopefully, as time goes on, it'll be, uh, able to offer so much more. Maybe even some skill training classes or stuff like that, but I don't know. The STEM, I'm not unfamiliar with it, but it's climbing and jumping and just, it's going crazy at sharing that right now. Not only do we offer it, but we're also a designated STEM school. And finally, the upgrades. What is, so, the schools, from what, since I've been here, the schools are probably the best, look the best that they have in years.
Thank you. Last but not least, Guy Coughlin. Want to say a song?
Well, three biggest needs, I think that's, uh, cabinet short. Our biggest achievements, I believe, are courses STEM designated, K-212. The improvement of the facilities, as everyone says, just walk through the place, look at the renovations we've done, and, and the continued work we continue to do with phases coming even later on. Green Acres, adding a robotics program, adding a drone program, adding welding program, and collaborating with schools such as San Diego High Tech, and also Gulfport, Mississippi. And to align ourselves with financial responsibility as we have over the past few years is not adding any new efforts since nineteen ninety-two. And that goes back for over five years, but that's something that you could say is financially sane and continues to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question on the list is, what is your five-year forecast for the district? Where do you hope to see the district in five years? We'll start off with Lori McGalway.
I see Noble Local continuing to provide world-class opportunities to our students through our STEM designation. I said before, it increase, it can increase salaries. I see Noble Local continuing to be fiscally responsible taxpayer monies, and I see the administration at Noble Local continuing to collaborate with national partners to seek opportunities for our students.
Thank you. Next up with the same question, we'll go with Constance Archer.
Is this where I can quote a friend? Seriously, we've got the best in the business. Our treasurer, Twina Hettleston, is the sole reason why our district forecast is so precise and detailed. This is what we hired her to do. However, I do know a little what I'm talking about when it comes to the forecast. For those that may not know, this forecast is published every May and November. I brought a few copies if anybody would like to take them home. Our five-year forecast is constantly being evaluated and drives long-term planning. We study those key financial indicators such as revenue compared to expenditures, cash balance, days of cash on hand, enrollment, and cost per pupil. In five years, I see the district continually improving, leading the region in science, technology, engineering, and math curriculum, and workforce development. I see improvements to be made on the current opportunities that exist along with increasing the opportunities for our kids with a consistent enrollment count.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Dana Hill.
Well, I've started running, I, I told people I might have started a sports complex, so I'll be hoping we're gonna start a sports complex. I'd like to continue with that and hope to make it a profitable sports complex for everybody. And would further investigate some of the things for the farm, like a butcher shop, which Guy's been working on for a long time, trying to get it going, and a veterinarian program, something to make that profitable. Where I see it in five years, I just hope we continue growing and make things great here and, uh, we can turn this business into some profit instead of spend, spend, spend.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Frank Miller.
I guess what I'd like to see in the next five years, I know I keep going back to character, but wouldn't it be great if we listened to a little Christian music at the football game and it was quiet enough that I could have a conversation with Bill Franklin without hearing all the yelling and screaming and stuff at the end? Wouldn't it be great to see our kids kneel down at the fifty-yard line and pray before the football game that everyone's healthy and safe? You know, when, when grandson was playing in the game the other day and Buckeye Trail prayed in the end zone, they come over and said, "Pap, we're ready." They said, "You're gonna get beat because they got Jesus on their side." Wouldn't it be great that the prayer at the pole, that every kid saved after, and their parents, and every pastor in this community showed up instead of twelve kids? I'm all about character. That's where I'm at. Like, uh, I think if we build character in our kids and our students, everything else will take care of itself.
Thank you. Next, we'll go with James Talks.
Five-year forecast that I see short and will be very direct and to the point. I would like to see us and be financially strong, as well as educationally strong. I also, in there, would like to see the sports complex for the simple fact that we get our kids out of school, do nothing, and go to practice, and get home at a decent time. So we're not stretching out the day long, and it gives us different avenues for other programs to be able to use the complex. We've gotta do all this while maintaining the tradition that got us here. And have to accept the innovation that will push us into the future.
Thank you. Next, we have Guy Coughlin.
My name's Dave for the five-year forecast. I'd like to see us follow the budgets we have already in place for continued growth for the district, the staff, and the students. As we grow, we need to focus on the areas of cost suppression and others of, to provide revenue streams for many of the facilities we plan to use and add over the next seven years. In five years, I'd like to see the district aligned with the vision that Campbell School District has in East Youngstown, Ohio. I would like to see a field house that has ties to our medical pathways classes, which in turn allows us to have doctors and rehabilitation specialists on campus to further the hands-on training for the students and also allow community members at work to take advantage of these evening appointments so no time is missed at work. I want to see a butcher shop in the district at the Green Acres complex. I'd like to see two bays in the bus garage that can be used by students and mechanics to maintain vehicles on the weekends or after hours to help gain hands-on experience. And the main ideas is building a middle or two to the front.
All right. Now, next question. If elected, what would your main focus be for the district? We'll start this off with Dana Hill.
Uh, my main focus, uh, I would hope would be to, uh, further technology in the classrooms to help our teachers and students, um, help our, with the aides that our teachers need to perform their duties. One of my focuses would be building a new school. We've put millions in this one, but we're gonna continue to put millions in, so we need to stop putting millions in and just build a new school. And that'd be something, actually get our complex done, and hopefully we can, in the next few years, look at something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Lori McGalway.
This is another easy one. To prepare students to the next level. The most important goal of a school is to prepare students to the next level. Whether your child is entering the workforce, enlisting in the military, or attending college, there is a skill set that is needed to succeed in our world. It is not possible to prepare students for every issue that may arise in their future. It is possible to encourage a strong mindset and expect critical thinking. The ability to play critically in situations will serve our students and our community well. When we expect more of our students, they will continue to rise to the occasion and perform well.
Thank you. Next up, we'll go with Frank Miller. If elected, what would your main focus be for the district?
As you can see right now, I'm pretty much the same all the way around. I hear all the numbers and all the money coming out and all the high stuff we need. But all we gotta do is teach our kids the difference between a need and a want. And we will build a character like you've never seen before. It isn't about all the mighty dollars. It's not about a big sports complex that makes it look better than Caldwell or Meadowbrook or whatever. I'm not about keeping up with the Joneses. We got it pretty good right now. Go to the inner cities and look at them. They got nothing. Our kids have got a lot. Love them, nurture them, and show them that you care, and you'll find out that your school and district will, will go beyond what you could ever imagine. It's not always about the money, it's not always about the shiny things.
Thank you. Next, we'll go with Guy Coughlin.
I'll make this short and sweet, I'll summarize it. If elected, I'd look to continue financial responsibility with a very fine set with E to the three in mind. That's employment, enrollment, or enlistment for any student and all students.
Thank you. Next, we'll go with Constance Archer.
I've learned early in my first term on the board to not make promises that you are not one hundred percent certain you can deliver. There are many layers and facets to every decision on the school board. Protocol, policies, procedures, legislation, Ohio Revised Code, just to name a few. But to answer your question, I plan on keeping my foot down on gas and continuing to work with the team on our master plan for the district. The master plan will involve addressing flooding, traffic flow issues, and the lack of parking. In addition, we are exploring a new bus garage, athletic fields, and a community complex. My focus would be continuing to address the concerns and meeting the needs of our students.
Thank you. Last one on the question will be James Talks.
My focus would be centered around making sure that every decision I made is first and foremost for every student. Giving them the opportunity to the best education we can offer, making sure all kids succeed in whatever path.
Making sure all kids succeed in whatever path they choose after graduation.
Thank you. Now, last question for tonight is, how do you ensure that all school fundings and grants will equally represent all programs, such as the arts, theater, shops, band, welding, and et cetera? We'll start with Constance Archer.
The school funding will be reflected by the needs and demands of the district. It's an ever-changing situation that is driven by many factors. My goal is to ensure our district is set for our kids' success. As a district, we must continue providing what each person needs to be successful rather than funding each effort equally. So to answer the question, I cannot ensure that all school funding will be equally represented. It's just not possible. Should we spend the same amount on cross-country than we do football? As for grants, many of these are specific and dictate what dollars can be used for. Nonetheless, we are constantly seeking out grants as well as measuring revenue versus expenditures, which is an indicator of deficit spending.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Guy Carpenter.
Our funding is based on the budget that we set that aligns with certain criteria for grants and allocated revenue. We want to make sure all programs get the attention they need, but there are formulas that we have to follow that allows for certain classes, certain programs to get more than others. And for the better and the best answer, it would be to contact Trina Pedersen there on what those formulas are based on. Sorry, Trina.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Dana Hill.
I think Constance said it pretty well. You can't equally divide the money between each. So my plan would be to listen to and divide accordingly to how it best suits the football team, the wrestling team, and that, and so on and so forth.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Louis McGalore.
Grants are very specific on how the money is spent. The money can only be utilized how the grant is written. For example, over two million dollars of grant money has been allocated and utilized for Green Acres funds. The grant is specific. For budgets and funding, every year the administration collaborates with principals and department heads to manage the budget for the upcoming year. During this time, the needs and wants for each program is discussed. In some cases, funding may be skewed from year to year based on the program needs. For example, one program may need equipment one year and not the next. This varies the budget. Once the budgets are created, it is the board's job to approve the allocation of the money.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Frank Miller.
Well, again, I'm sure my answer won't be very popular because I'm not very politically correct. But I don't believe in the word equal. It's often taken out of context, and it always ends up one-sided. If we need, and we get a grant, and our cross-country team needs the money and our football team doesn't, just because our football team is more popular than our cross-country team and maybe generates more revenue for the school, the cross-country team shouldn't feel that pain. They should get the money, not the football team. It should be allocated according to needs, not wants. That's what we're here for, right? For the kids, the ones that need it. If soccer's not that popular, okay, I'm not a soccer guy. Wouldn't go to, wouldn't cross the street to watch a game. But if they need equipment and our basketball team doesn't, they should get the, they should get the money and model to them.
Thank you. Last up is James Fox.
When I read this question, I thought this question was more suitable for the accountants. It kind of leaves us out of here hanging. But I'll, 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 I'll express it the best, the most way I can. I'll be honest, I'm not real sure just how all finances work within the school system yet. But I'm, it'll be my mission to learn as much as I can through our dialogue and discussion. What I, what I do know is that a school board member is supposed to be representative of the community. Therefore, it's important to communicate with them in order to be a voice of you. Requires attending events, sporting event. Everything else can go into schools. Asking questions, focused on ensuring every student an opportunity to succeed, regardless of his or her interests, is met. And will help spread the district's resources more equally.
Thank you. Thank you all, thank you all of your sponsors, candidates, and now let's turn it back over to our hats.
Good job, Constance.
Let's hear it for Constance, I love her. We've got some good questions that the student body brought to our candidates. Now, we're gonna go into the audience questions. And we'll go through those as time permits. We'll take the questions that were submitted earlier. And each candidate will pull from the box one question and provide a one-minute response. I'm gonna go around, like, you pull out one question, I'll give you a minute to read it. And then, if anybody's ready to be the first volunteer, Constance. And then, uh...
I need that chance.
So I'll start out here. And then bring your question up with me, I'll read it.
She'll love me a little bit, huh?
Yes.
Hey, Guy, take off.
You can take it, too. And we'll give the candidates a couple minutes to digest the question and the response. First question from the audience is, what is your opinion on accountability when it comes to members attending meetings and participating and voting on all matters?
I think I said earlier, current voting is everything. Uh, to elaborate, uh, we have good attendance by the board members at our school board meetings. Um, I haven't missed a one. I didn't even see the last one, but... And voting on all matters, I think that's something we all do so candidly. Um, the process of voting is not just a spur of the moment. Often, it's weeks of deliberation and understanding one another's sides. Um, I will tell you that these two individuals up here, I don't always agree with them. But it's okay because we can agree to disagree because we're all in it for the right reason.
Thank you, Constance. Next up, Frank Miller. How do your experiences and qualifications make you the right person to lead our schools in preparing students for the upcoming tech boom in Ohio, often referred to as the Midwest version of Silicon Valley? Given the presence of the Intel Plant, Google Data Center, Amazon Data Center, and Microsoft Azure Data Center in our region, please describe in your background and share your vision for adapting our schools to equip students with the skills and knowledge needed for the influx of tech jobs in this thriving tech ecosystem?
Can you repeat the question?
It's all...
Oh, this will be short and sweet. I have no experience in that. I have none. I'm just gonna be honest with you. I've owned my business for seventeen years, I've got several rental properties. Um, QuickBooks gives me fits. Uh, we just adapted and went to Square. Uh, not put me and my wife both in a mental institution. I am not tech savvy. Um, give me a shovel, put me on a tractor, and let's still bale some hay. But when it comes to the computer, if it wasn't for my grandson and my granddaughter, I'd be completely lost. So I'm not gonna sit here and blow smoke because I am not tax, tech savvy. As a matter of fact, when I was in school, computers came out. I said, "This would be the downfall of mankind, that we would lose our labor." We would lose it. And in seventeen years I've been in business, I've got news for you. If you can change the oil, and you ain't afraid to get dirty, come over and I'll give you a job because I need help.
And Frank, what would you volunteer to do next?
Boy, you should've got that question.
What are your thoughts on yearly fees charged to students? And how are these fees determined?
I'm gonna be honest, we're, we're chuckling because, um, I read this and Constance says, "Well, that, that question was meant for you." There's been a couple meetings where we have talked about student fees. Going to be one hundred percent, I don't think. I think that if we are going to require someone to take English, we should let them take English and not charge them. Now, there are some classes that need a little bit of, um, extra. Welding, food class, those I can see charging a minimal fee.
How are the fees determined?
How are the fees determined? Those are determined by the principal in each building. And I'm assuming that they talk with the teacher in their meets, possibly the once, how they want to educate. That was my first red one.
And another volunteer, thanks. Your question is, why would you decide to run?
This decision I kind of made probably four or five years ago. I've always felt that, that I've had something that I can contribute to the school system. Like I said, I, I feel that I can bring a, a level ahead to some of the decisions that need to be made throughout the district. But yes, I'm also willing to learn to be able to contribute to some of the hard things that go on in the school.
Thank you. Dana? Why is there no money for office supplies and budgets? PTO should not have to purchase a land with your funds or kids' wages to field trips.
That's easy, I can't answer that. I'm not there. But it's something I would look into or could look into if elected. That's a question for these three over here. Thank you.
Guy? What is your favorite color?
Blue.
Actually, it's not red.
That's for you. Okay. It should be green.
It should be, yeah, it's green.
So a lot of what we have seen lately is business-oriented and not so much education-driven. What are we trying to do to help change this?
Well, I think most of those are aligned together. Uh, I think the focus looks like it's been more business-oriented because we're trying to get everybody prepared for J O B. And whether that is to continue them in higher education. Again, that goes back to the employment, enlistment, enrollment, the E to the three, which was set forth by Dan Leffingwell. Uh, I think there is a lot of things that have been coming out here lately in the elementary, there's been a lot of unaligned curriculum that we've been teaching. Uh, and I think we're getting better at doing that by grouping teachers together. I think that's one of the greatest things that they've done is combining teachers so that they can teach the same amount. We're getting back to that. We're also allowing two or three teachers to be in the same classroom so that they can help, you know, kids that may struggle with being in the league or kids that may be better in math today that don't have to spend as much time with them. I think we just need to look at that. The district as a whole and the line itself is the best script we can give.
Thank you, Guy. All right, round two of the questions. I'm gonna start on that, Dana. Let me hold it. Okay, Frank? If elected, what would you do to maximize opportunities for other extracurricular activities, including sports, biddy league, committee?
This is an easy one, I put that one in the box. First of all, let me start by, we're talking about a sport complex and we can't even put visitors' bleachers on the other side of the football field. And so that's, that's, um, where I would start. The biddy league programs, they should be part of the school district. That money should come out of the athletic department. Those kids that are playing on the biddy league level, their moms and their dads pay taxpayer dollars just like everybody else. And it should be aligned. If those kids have access to that money, and those volunteer coaches, volunteer coaches, they're not getting paid. They're buying equipment out of their own pockets for these kids. Why don't they have access to that money? That needs to change. I don't care if that's the way it always has been, that doesn't mean it's right.
Guy? What is going to be done to increase band and drama?
Well, this is a tough one. We had a, uh, a tough board meeting one night. Not only the decisions that we made are, are popular by many means, but it all goes back to the funding and formulas that we have in place as, uh, we have more and more kids get involved in, in band and drama. More and more people, you know, then that means that the money's all well. Uh, we did actually, um, the band had new uniforms, so we went ahead and we paid for the uniforms that were already a lot that they hadn't paid for. So, uh, I think as the, it's pretty tempting, right? As, you know, uh, I don't say deployment, but as more and more kids get involved, you have more and more funding.
Thank you. All right, James. Bullying, hate speech, and inappropriate behavior are clearly problems in our district, and this has brought morale down. If elected, what changes will you bring to combat this overwhelming problem plaguing our school?
I'm, I'm very, very positive that there's, uh, policies already grown up by the school system to, uh, battle against this. Um, and also there's back to the question, the safety questions. Um, I'm, I'm almost positive that there is some programs available to the state that allows, um, district to look into, uh, like cyberbullying and bullying and stuff like that. Right along with all the stuff as far as the law enforcement, safety, and then, and security. So, other than that, I don't know what the board's policies are. But, uh, you know, if I, once I would get in there, I would be able to get that information and, you know, and learn more about it.
Thank you. Dana? Okay, Constance. Okay, Constance.
Constance, can you hold on just one second? That camera died.
Yeah. Do you want an extra battery?
Yeah. Well, so, I'm sorry, the kids plugged it in, but the actual charging port wasn't plugged in. So if you can show me, hold on.
It's okay. Why you don't edit, right?
I thought maybe it gets.
Right, I'm.
No, it just. I'm so sorry.
You're fine. Okay, I have to sit down in my car. Sorry, what is the other thing?
I apologize. It's fine. We're learning.
So what concerns do you have about key areas of our success, including sending college recruits?
I will not go into specifics or details, but I do have concerns. And I'm currently educating myself on the issues before I can work with the team to talk about solutions. I have currently reached out to about a half a dozen parents with seniors. And I am asking questions to question parents. I've had discussions with the superintendent already. And I have actually reached out to my former guidance counselor for some more information in terms of where can I go, what resources exist out there to allow me to better understand. I'm a college graduate and things are much different. I think that the opportunity to attain C C P courses is great. And it works well if the student knows their specific career path.
Thank you. Dana and Laura. Okay. Do you think our testing scores are reflective of success and why? Our testing scores?
You gotta have testing and you gotta have scores to graduate, so. The first success is getting out here. So I'm not completely understanding the question a hundred percent, but. I mean, you gotta, you gotta pass out if you're something wrong, so. That's all I got on that, I don't know.
Laura. This is what they want. If you are currently serving on the school board, why would you want to be on the school? And do you feel you've been successful fulfilling that reason?
As I said in the beginning, four years of dollar grant for my kids. I want to have an opinion in their education. Do I feel that I've been successful? Absolutely. There have been so many pauses in the last four years and I feel blessed that I've been a part of them. I'm able to give a well-thought-out opinion. And I tend not to sway from that. If it's really my gut decision, I'm okay sitting alone. I genuinely care for the school strength. And, um. That's it.
Thank you. So we have time for one more round, and then we're gonna go to our closing statements, okay?
Why do we just go back here? I have no idea.
Okay, God. Are you going to rubber stamp requests from the administration whether you agree or not?
That's definitely in there. If you can look back at my voting record, it's not always been to give us majority. You know, that we told men all the time about, hey, you're a yes man, yes man, me, they, and that's not what you're saying about that. But if I didn't feel that it is better for our kids or for the district or for the staff or the administration itself, I'm not gonna align myself with that. Now, we will, you know, discuss it amongst ourselves, you know, we may be on the board, and to verify that, you know, it is the best thing we have. Not one that, you know, as Frank says, he's sent me his ways, I'm kinda sent my ways too. I like to align ourselves to be the best. I mean, we're that nation. You know, we're here right now. Other schools we collaborate with, as I've said before, have been San Diego, High Tech, Cod. And if I make decisions that are, that bring us down to just what, you know, maybe the administration says and only agree with them, then I'm not doing you guys any service.
Thank you. All right, James. How do you feel about taking over Little Zet's preschool? Preschool teachers want to be part of the local, not E C D, E S C.
And one of the questions we had, we had named three of the biggest achievements that we thought we seen in the district. I had four, but my first one, I think, was the preschool program we have here, Shandale. It's without a doubt, it's accelerating quicker than most people can imagine. If it's doing that great, I don't see why the school shouldn't absorb it as its own and make those teachers and those kids, you know, local students and teachers.
Amen. Frank? Do you feel our pre-K eighth, pre-K through eighth, eighth building is overcrowded? And if so, how do we move forward? If not, have you been in the building lately? Are you aware of enrollment?
Have I been in the building lately? Just to bring my grandkids their lunch when they forget it. Do I think it's overcrowded? From the teachers that I've talked to, and I know several of the kids, the teachers that teach over there, yes, I do. I would fix it. Build a new school. Build a bigger school. You know, I mean, it all starts at the pre-K. I mean, we always aim everything towards the high school level and everything. But if they're failing over there because they're not getting the attention they need because it's overcrowded, they're gonna fail here. That's pretty easy. That's cut and dry. Do I know about the enrollment? Absolutely. They just told me. Every single one of them told me the enrollment's up. And I would believe the enrollment's up. They haven't broken down whether it's high school, junior, or elementary. But if I was a yes man, I'd say the enrollment's up in the elementary school.
Thank you. Okay, Constance. Can you give me an example of a time you went against the majority to stand up for your individual opinion?
I voted no for a position that may have not been a good fit. I listened to the community. I listened to my gut. This was not majority opinion, and I was okay with that. And I'm still okay with that no vote. I have a little bit of time, so I'm gonna use a shameless plug. On the third Thursday of the month, we do have school board meetings. We also have an electronic format called Board Docs. You can follow along electronically and see those no votes.
Thank you. Laura. Do you believe we are on the right path, or do you think changes should be made?
I can answer this with a full hearted one hundred percent. We are on the right path. Now, with that being said, can we get better? Absolutely. We can always get better. Our admin, our admin and teachers are constantly evaluating the needs of our students and how to improve their opportunities. They listen and they ruminate on how we can get better. So, do I think that Shandale, no locals in the right path? One hundred percent.
Dana? What are your thoughts on the current curriculum? Should there be any changes?
I think we have an excellent curriculum here. The students are learning a lot of different things. But there's a room for improvement. There's always room for improvement. So that's our part of growing. So hopefully, we can have some improvements and make some upgrades to the curriculum in the future and to better, to better our students in any way possible.
Thank you. I hope you leave everybody responding to that round. I'd like to pull up one question and then any volunteer can answer, okay? Are you currently pleased with our administration? Anybody can answer? What was the question? Administration? I wouldn't say that's addressed that. Administration.
Out of it. Am I able to answer yet?
Yes, I do. Whoever wanted to see that question, yes.
So, are you currently pleased with our administration? Well, I think that can be taken in a couple different ways. I consider us admin. Am I satisfied? Am I pleased? Yep. As Constance said before, we don't always agree. And a lot of times, we agree to disagree, but that's what makes working on a board great. You listen to someone's opinion and you change yours. Maybe, maybe not. I guess that says that we're open-minded.
Thank you. And anyone else like to address that?
It cannot be addressed for actually the admin in the schools and not as the school board because that's not what we're, I'm assuming that's not what the person was asking. They're actually asking about the admin that you all hired.
Oh, sure.
Is what we're curious about.
Okay, can I try?
Go ahead. Well, being that I'm not in the hiring process, I'm not, I don't sit on the school board. Do I think the admin is doing a good job? I'd have to address that individually. You know, I'd have to look at it individually. I would never lump, and I don't believe in persecuting a group of people because maybe there's one person that's doing a bad job. So being that I don't know them on a personal level, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna comment negative. Could we be better? Yeah. Are we better than most? Absolutely. Is there, is there people in places that maybe don't need to be there? Well, elect me. And I'll go find out and I'll be the first one to tell them, because I'm a snitch. If they're not doing their job, I'll point it out to you. Believe me that.
Thank you. All right.
I'd like to address that as well, too. We have a lot of new admin if you're talking about building principals and everything, so. You know, I don't think you could, you could throw the baby out of the bath water in her first six months or so. But I do think that we do have some really good, really good focused leaders. I do think there is room for improvement. I, you know, I do. We sit on a board that gets evaluations given to us of what they're, you know, they're doing. But I do believe that they're young. There's a lot of them that's young in the position. I do think, you know, there is, without getting too crazy into it, I think give it time. Give it time. Time heals all wounds.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I do, uh.
Can we rebuttal? Is that part of the case?
No.
This is me to comment. So I do have a comment from the community. Are you all aware that there are deaf parents in our schools? With deaf children as well? Please be aware and provide interpreters when needed. Thank you for all you do. And thank you for our interpreter tonight. Now, I'd like to go into our closing statements. We have three minutes for our closing statements, and who would like to go first? All right, James.
Once again, I'd like to thank everybody involved for giving us the opportunity to speak to you all tonight. And let everyone know in my stance of what I feel are crucial topics that affect our students. I want to reassure you that I truly believe in our school district. But I also believe that there is always room for improvement. The responsibility starts at the top with the school board and administrators. How can we hold our students, teachers, and staff accountable if it's not accountable at the top? You've all heard me say, we need to be more transparent with all involved within our district. We cannot continue to keep making some of the same mistakes over and over. We need to be more conscientious in our decision-making and spending for the sake of the future here at every local school.
Thank you, James. Frank?
Um. Okay, let's address the elephant in the room. We just had a gentleman say that we're not gonna throw the baby out of the bath in six months. We just did it! Now, now if you wanna give the guy a chance, give him a chance. But if he wasn't able to be fired, we don't write him a check, send you down the road, and give you medical insurance for free, three freaking years on our taxpaying dollar. I don't know what happened. I don't know the details of why that man's not here. But from what I've seen, maybe he was exposed to some stuff that we didn't want to know. So if you wanna hire, if you wanna elect me, I'm telling you right now, your hiring process is gonna be different. Because I'm not gonna hire someone, give them a four or five-year contract, and then write them a check to send them down the road because they didn't fit in to our culture. If he deserved to be fired, he should have been fired. And if he wanted to take the support, we got enough money to hire attorneys to fight him. But we don't write him a blank check. And if that's how the way the school district works, hire me. I'll work for you for six months.
Any last? Constance?
Letting people be wrong about you or a situation while keeping your peace and focus is the most misunderstood power movie you will ever make. Thank you for being here. Thank you for taking an interest in the election, submitting questions, and listening throughout the evening. There's a wealth of information on the O D E website. Reach out to our treasurer. Ask your board members. I'm not in the district every single day, and often I do not know what some of you have experienced. But what I do know is that if you reach out to me, I will work with you and get answers and develop resolutions. One thing I am for certain about is that we have this funding formula. The state is not giving us money. We have to be relevant. And it is our job to continue to provide world-class opportunities to our children. The minute you stop being relevant, you lose your own. Quite simple. We receive a substantial amount of money with our own kids returning. I assure you that as a board, we are constantly reviewing student data, staff data, and financial data to continually plan. and financial data to continually plan. I look forward to continuing to serve this district. I will continue to support the safety and security of our children first and foremost. I will continue to support pre-K access and equity. I will continue to support the wide array of courses that prepare our kids to be future ready within the student designation of our K through twelve. By no means would I ever single-handedly take credit for these accomplishments noted throughout the evening. But what this board of education, superintendent, administration and staff have accomplished in six years did not happen by mistake. Being part of a movement and a conscious effort to create a culture of continuous improvement has been humbling and quite deriding. Again, I encourage you to reach out to me personally with questions. Reach out to staff in the district. Ask them for their opinions on the candidates running and do your homework. Know the facts and as always, have an open mind. Value what we do well. It's great to be green.
Well, I guess I put that one on the tee before I have to knock out of the park there, right? There you go. But there's a lot that went into certain decisions, uh, and a lot that we can't share in public forum. But I will tell you that well, that as well as any other decision we made doesn't get taken lightly. I mean, we're always in the spectrum in the eye of the public. We're always being critiqued. So, this may not be the greatest job in the world, but the reason I want to continue to do it is for the kids in this place and if I make a mistake, I'm gonna learn from them, I'll tell you that. And we did our homework when we did the process. We did all the homework, so, yeah. We learned from that, a couple things you could have tweaked for them. But we're gonna continue to grow, we're gonna continue to give opportunities for the teachers to get better for the students to have more opportunities than we've ever had. And I really want to push to get alignment with the community and, uh, for around Caldwell, Neville County, wherever it may be, where we continue to keep our students here instead of getting them trained up to go to the intel. I see it every day. For the last thirty-two years I've driven no less than an hour and a half, two hours each way every day to go to a job. I want that to stop with our kids so we can see our kids, um, our grandkids without having to drive an hour or an hour and a half. Or just so our kids don't have to drive two hours to make ends meet just so they can live in the house, you know, or be away from their kids during the evenings. I also want to see us add facilities that allow students to be able to have at least three practices a week and be out of the district by seven thirty unless it's game night. I want us to continue to grow from pre-K all the way through to the graduating. And I want those people to come back and continue to take on, uh, coaching jobs. I want to also look at each other to be neighbors, you know, I want, I want this to continue to grow. That's the thing, if you elect me, I'm gonna do my best to make sure that happens. Thank you.
All right, Dana.
So a little bit of you guys, uh, I'm not here to advise anybody, you're all my friends. I want to continue, I'm not here to make enemies, but, uh, I've talked to several, a few of you about certain things and when I talk to, I don't mention names. Uh, I guess we're, I get three of them, if I three of them people get three of them names. Transparency is important. Uh, and what Frank said, I agree, but, uh, people out there is not gonna remember what you done right. They don't remember what you shared up. And with that said, I wanna move forward. Very much, I'm moving forward. Whoever moves, whoever gets elected, move forward and be positive in this school district and make a difference.
We've had so many pauses in the last four years and it not come without deliberation and hard decisions. Regardless of how you feel about the decisions that were made, it would be hard to argue that it did not pause, did not resolve in positive outcomes for our students and our community. These decisions were hard, trust me. Board members do not take decisions about our children and their education lightly. I take you home and ruminate for days. Our work for the students at Nova Local is not finished. They deserve everything we can provide them. I bring many strengths to the table, but the most advocating on board is my discernment. I can look at all angles of the situation and dissect the circumstances with practicality and intelligence. My children attend Nova Local and I'm fully invested in the success that it brings to our students. Go Zet's.
Hello, everyone. So, I wanna thank you all so much for coming out tonight because this was a big, a big deal. To me at least, it was a big deal and I'm sure for the people that came out here today, it's a big deal. And looking at all the patient, the faces, uh, you guys, again, tough ones, a lot of you guys. It's, you know, you wanted to have answers to your questions and I think we got a lot of them tonight. So I wanna thank the candidates that came out here today because I knew that that was, you know. It, it was good for you guys and we, we're very appreciative, so, thank you. And I wanna thank my husband that, uh, went along with this. He did not know that I was going to. So, thank you and thank you to all the volunteers I helped along the way. And I really, really want to encourage the kids that are here to keep on your journey of like learning and growing. And I wanna share with you guys just a, a little bit of myself. So, when I was eighteen, um, they had, uh, MTV News and that's how I got all my news. You know, I was very, very into it. And on there they had Rock the Vote and that was a big thing. Like, they got you pumped up and you were like, yes, I'm gonna take on the world, I'm gonna make changes and it was gonna be, you know, a big thing to do. And I asked my parents, I said, hey, you know, what part of me am I? And I basically went along with what they did and I got in there. And it was basically like a test that I didn't study for because I had no idea, no idea what any of these candidates had to offer, um, what any of the issues were, I kind of briefly went through it. So I just started going down through and I just made like little designs and I was like, oh, well, that's a woman. She obviously would align with what I was thinking as my eighteen-year-old self. And, you know, I may have made a change, but it might have been the wrong one, it might have been the right one. So when you guys are making those decisions, please take that in mind to educate yourselves and to take that seriously because you could be making changes not only for yourself, but the future. You know, siblings that you have or like these guys, you know, they're gonna make the change for maybe not just you guys, but the future. So, thank you all. We really appreciate you guys and we appreciate our community, we are really, really grateful, so thank you.
I'd like to thank our students that came out tonight to, uh, help put this down and to stand and be recognized. We appreciate that so many government and citizens, um, being engaged in, uh, learning more about, uh, their candidates and the, uh, you know, the election process, so. With that, I hope everyone found this evening impactful and I'd ask all of you to go and cast your vote in the upcoming election. And also, please help yourself to refreshments outside the auditorium and enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.